Good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona to be held February 5th, 2019 at 6:04. We're a little bit behind here tonight, but no big deal. Here in Cottonwood, Arizona and at the Council Chambers Building. So first order of business is roll call.
Councilmember Alt House?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Holtz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Here.
Mayor Olensky?
Here.
And Councilmember Howard, he is absent.
Okay, very good. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members tonight that have anything to report?
I have one item.
Please.
On January 19th, I was able to attend the first responders appreciation dinner at the Moose Lodge. Wonderful turnout, over 200 people. Just a wonderful event and I was honored to be there among all of our wonderful first responders from throughout Verde Valley, but especially there to support our Cottonwood Police and Fire.
Great, thank you.
I had a couple of business openings. Councilmember Matthews and I attended a few grand openings for businesses in town. The Little Flower Shop on Main was really gearing up for Valentine's Day, so keep them in mind if you need Valentine Day supplies. Also Planet Fitness celebrated its grand opening. They donated $5,000 to our local Yavapai Big Brothers Big Sisters, trying to help out here in the community. Yet another one this week tomorrow at 11:30 a.m. is the grand opening for Sanctuary Cove Healthcare, if any of you are interested in that new business. And then a program that's important or very dear to my heart is a local internship which will be highlighted next Wednesday, the 13th. It will be part of a local gathering from 5:30 to 7:30 at Mingus Union High School. And you can learn more information about an automotive internship among other programs at the high school where our local businesses such as 360 Automotive right here in town have high school students actually working at their shops and it's really a neat hands-on program here for our high school kids. That's it, thanks.
Very good, thanks. Any other council members?
Okay, just briefly, I was able to interview Superintendent Steve King and Al Flarto, who's the gentleman that's founded the Verde Valley Leadership. A lot of city employees have gone through that, a lot of community members have gone through that program. And it's a great, just a half an hour interview during our Inside Cottonwood that I do monthly, so if you have a chance to see that, it'll be posted on my newsletter. It's coming out here in a few days, hopefully, fingers crossed. And you can also see it on YouTube. And I think there's a cable channel that it shows on, although I'm pretty unfamiliar with the channel, I can never remember it, sorry. Also was able to interview Ron Corbin on that same program, which is just a stunning interview, which you won't want to miss, yeah. If you want to see him cry, it's just, he really drew a lot of emotion out of him, so definitely not something you want to miss. In other news, attended Doug's retirement party last Saturday. Big hats off to Sandra Salas and Eskai Allen, thanks for all the work that you put into it, all your staff too, and he really did a tremendous job over there, looked great. It was a very well-attended event. And Mr. Corbin and I this morning were able to present to the Realtors Association and answered a lot of questions that they had, and it was just good to introduce Ron to those folks. And that's about all that I have. Anything else to report?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I do have a couple items. First, also this afternoon, I was able to go over to Prescott and attended an Economic Development Summit that was hosted by Yavapai College. I got to meet the new president. This is her third day, so I look forward to having a more personal meeting with her, but the program was exceptional in that it ended with a call to action and each of the members from all of the county, cities and towns and a few other partners to begin an outreach for different programs. I know that we have started working on workforce housing, so they're also going to start a committee or a think tank on that, and so I've got my name in the hat on for that one, but they looked at several other issues facing economic development for the community. And I'll be sharing more information with that with council members once I get the slides back. Very interesting meeting. A couple of upcoming items, the Old Town Association is hosting their second annual SIP and Stroll on February 14th from 5 to 8. Tickets are $35 and are available online at oldtown.org. It's a great way to spend Valentine's Day enjoying tasting of wine, wine tasting and sweets. So they're going to have sweets with the chocolate. I don't know that any of that's bad, I just can't find a downside to wine and chocolate. Anyway, I'll move on. The Arizona Department of Transportation will be presenting on-road bike safety to Verde Valley residents on Wednesday, February 20th from 12 to 1 at the Cottonwood Recreation Center to RSVP, and for more information, contact Rich Liver at 300-3674.
Okay, great. Okay, if there's nothing else, we have Call of the Public next on the agenda, and this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. Are there any folks here tonight to speak during Call of the Public? No, okay. We'll move on then to approval of the minutes of the work session of January 8, 2019, Strategic Retreat, January 10, 2019, special meeting of January 14, 2019, and the regular meeting of January 15, 2019.
I have one correction.
Sure.
Page nine of the January 15th. Second to the last paragraph, it says Councilmember Alt House, or Alt, Allen stated Councilmember Henry was nominated last year, blah, blah, blah. That was actually me, not Allen. It was actually Alt House.
Okay. All right, with that correction, then I would go ahead and motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Okay, there's motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
Wasn't there a motion and a second?
Halt.
Halt.
Oh, you and Tim.
Sorry. All right. We'll get the kinks worked out. We don't need a roll call vote on that, right? No, okay, all right. So minutes are approved. And then we move on to unfinished business. We have just one item under unfinished business. It's ordinance number 656, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Point 16, Operation of Vehicles under the Municipal Code by deleting Section F under Section 10. Point 16.050 Miscellaneous Traffic Enforcement Rules and adding a new Section 10.16.080 Use of Electronic Devices, second and final reading.
Mayor, if we can, we'd ask the chief to come up and just take a couple of minutes. I know we've already gave a presentation, but we'd like to provide an update.
Okay, great.
Sure, Mayor and Council, thank you very much. My name is Steve Gazella, I'm the Cottonwood Police Chief. Thought it prudent to give you just a real brief update because there has been some progress at the state level since we last before you with the proposed ordinance. We have what Mr. Horton and I deem to be a viable Senate Bill 1165, which is very comprehensive, pretty much encompasses most of the facets that we had built into our ordinance. That certainly is not a done deal, so the staff recommendation would be to stay the course and we'll see where it goes. The bill does have language that if it is enacted at the state level, it will nullify all local ordinances, including this one. I'll move the mic over to Mr. Horton for comment, and then we'll close it out and get out of your way.
And as council will recall, we talked about how if the state did something, the only way that the Cottonwood ordinance would not be able to take effect or would not, no longer be effective, is if the state preempted with specific language in the bill. There was a survey of communities that were getting ahead of the state, and the Arizona Legislature, maybe Winston Churchill was referring to them when he said, "You can always count on them to do the right thing after they've exhausted all the other options." But I have a strong feeling that because of things that have happened recently and because of things that are happening nationwide, this bill or something very much like it, because you don't really want to see lobbying made, it changes a lot and it goes through a lot of convolutions in the legislative process, but this bill that's under consideration is modeled after another jurisdictions bill. It's well-crafted, so it may well survive intact or something like it will, I believe, get through, but still it won't be effective until midsummer. So the ordinance, if you pass it tonight, that you adopt, will be effective in 30 days. So there'll be an opportunity for the police department to start the education program that the chief has indicated would, they would engage in before they started enforcing anyway.
Right.
And to close that out, Mayor, the language in here indicates that if the legislature rolls with this particular Senate bill, there is a stipulation that there's no enforcement. There is an education component built into this one that's 60 days. So that'll, you know, conceivably if this happens, and again, we'll believe it when we see it, but all indicators cause us to believe that actions like the one this council has taken throughout the state and obviously the tragic death of the Salt River Tribal Police Officer, we'll finally get the legislature to take the right action in this case, but I thank you for your attention on this matter and your diligence, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the chief?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Council, would you like to move forward?
Sure, and I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So I move to approve ordinance number 656.
Second.
Okay, would Councilmember Matthews make a motion? Councilmember Alt House second it, and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
And Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. If we could, please have Deputy Clerk read ordinance number 656 by title only.
Ordinance number 656, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Operation of Vehicles of the Municipal Code by deleting Section 10.16.050F Unsafe Vehicle Operation and adding a new Section 10.16.080 Use of Electronic Devices. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, up next is the consent agenda, and the following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence. So we have four items tonight on the consent agenda, I'll go ahead and read them out. Item one is one-year extension of agreement with Diesel Direct, successor to SC Fuels for off-site fueling services. Item two, proposed airport ground lease with the Experimental Aircraft Association, Verde Valley, Chapter Number 952, at the Cottonwood Municipal Airport. Item three is Resolution Number 2977, approving a joint defense agreement with the town of Clarkdale, Arizona for the Brian Mickelson Marathon. Item four is professional services agreement with Goodwill of Central and Northern Arizona to provide career advisory services and digital skills workshops at the Cottonwood Public Library. Are there any items that a council member would like to have pulled? No, any member of the public would like to have an item pulled? Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Alt House made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, Mayor, the motion is approved, the consent agenda is approved, but could please have Deputy Clerk read Resolution Number 2977 by title only?
Resolution Number 2977, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, approving a joint defense agreement with the town of Clarkdale, Arizona for the Brian Mickelson Marathon. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we roll into new business, and first item of business is Resolution Number 2978, appointing Denise Renaud, a member of the Board of Adjustment, and establishing her term of office. Evening.
Evening, Mayor Council.
I'm 26.
My name is Amanda, Amanda Ritter, I'm your HR Director. We have three Board of Adjustment seats currently available. The openings were advertised, we received one application, therefore, because we only had one application received, we waived the blind major's line review process. The one applicant we received is Denise Renaud, and Ms. Renaud resides within Incorporated City of Cottonwood limits and meets the minimum qualifications for this position. Staff recommends then that she is appointed to the seat, and Ms. Renaud has indicated that she would be here this evening in case you would like her to introduce herself.
Okay. Would Ms. Renaud like to introduce herself? Welcome.
Thank you.
Come on up to the podium, don't be shy.
I'm not usually shy, it's a little overwhelming.
Just curious, what was it interested you to apply for this position?
It sounded fascinating, and it was just kind of, I wanted to do some volunteer work. I have kind of taken a break from my volunteering for the last four years or so, and I just felt it was time to get back into it, and I've been coming to some of the meetings and the treatment that goes on in the city, and I've seen quite much change a lot in the 40 years I've lived in Arizona, so I'm excited about where it's going, I want to be involved.
Well, good, well, we sure appreciate you volunteering. Now, if you find that the Board of Adjustment, which doesn't meet very often, is not exciting enough for you, we have many other boards and commissions, many others.
Well, I'll keep that in mind.
Okay, because I can't remember the last time this board met, but it's been a while, so.
Okay, well.
Not saying it couldn't happen tomorrow, but, you know. When we need you, we really need you, but when we don't, it's just pretty quiet.
You know when you need me.
But we sure do appreciate you volunteering, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the council?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2978, appointing Denise Renaud a member of the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Okay, would Vice Mayor make the motion, and Councilmember Alt House second it? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Okay. If we could please have you read Resolution Number 2978 by title only?
Resolution Number 2978, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Denise Renaud, a member of the Board of Adjustment, and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is Resolution Number 2979, appointing Kimberly Byrd, a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office.
Due to the resignation of Diane Pawest, we have one Parks and Rec Commission seat expiring December 21st, 2019, available. This opening was advertised, we received one application, so again, we did not go through the blind review process in this case. Ms. Byrd meets the minimum criteria for serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission as she lives within Incorporated City of Cottonwood limits. Staff then recommends that Ms. Byrd be appointed to fill this seat, and Ms. Byrd has also indicated that she would be here this evening in case you would like her to introduce herself.
Very good. Ms. Byrd, would you, there you are, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Same question, what was it that interested you to apply?
Well, as a lifelong athlete, I've always been interested in parks and recreation. Even in the Air Force, I did, I played a lot of sports and I was always active on base with those types of activities. Once I'm read in on the long-term goals and plans of the Parks and Recreation, I hope to be able to use some of my logistics support experience in the military to be able to offer some opinion and suggestions and ideas.
Fantastic.
But until I actually have an idea what those are, I, you know, just blather at that point.
Very good, we'd be quite busy as we just approved a big chunk of money to go.
I heard that, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll have your work cut out for you, so.
Good, budget was a part of my job, too.
Great, that's great. Any other questions for Ms. Byrd?
No, thank you.
Well, thanks for volunteering, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Make motion.
Please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2979, appointing Kimberly Byrd, a member of the City's Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Matthews made the motion, and Alt House seconded it, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, please read Resolution Number 2979 by title only.
Resolution Number 2979, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Kimberly Byrd, a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and establishing her term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And again, we have Resolutions Number 2980, 2981, 2982, appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Wilber.
We have three terms expiring on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the terms of Christopher Dowell, Robert Williams, and Susan Masters. Two of these commissioners reapply for their seats. We received one additional application to fill the seat of Susan Masters. Because we received three applications for three seats, we did not go through the blind review process here. Two current members of the commission already fill the design-related background minimum requirement, so these three positions don't need to fulfill that minimum requirement. All must still be residents within the city limits, though. All three are residents within the city limits, so staff is recommending that we reappoint Christopher Dowell and Robert Williams and newly appoint Terrell Sherman as they all live within the city limits. And I didn't see Christopher Dowell here tonight, but I believe both Robert Williams and Terrell Sherman should be here to introduce themselves to you.
Okay, very good. How about we call up Mr. Williams first? Thank you for reapplying.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, it's been a real pleasure, thanks to you, having been able to serve on this commission for nine years, and there's been a lot of changes over that nine years. When I started, we had six retirees and one non-retiree on the board, we're down to three retirees now, which is good, but with some good background. But with your blessing, I look forward to going in another three-year term.
Very good, well, certainly has been great working with you as Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, so look forward to continuing our good work. Thank you. Any questions? No, okay. And then is Terrell Sherman, yes, sir?
I see that, I see Commissioner Dowell's not here tonight, but I'm sure the police chief, he's out doing his duty with the police, our city police department, and busy, and I really appreciate his services on the board, too.
Sure, thank you, thank you. Is Terrell Sherman in? Great. Come on up, ma'am, thank you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Can we ask you what interested you?
Well, when I found out that there was a position open, a friend of mine who's actually on the Planning and Zoning Commission told me about it, Tom Narwood. And so I've lived in Cottonwood 17 years, and I basically have never really volunteered in the community. I love our little town and I kind of want to get more involved in activities around here. When I found out about it, I thought, well, you know, what better way than to volunteer? So I have a background in geography, majored in geography at the University of Wisconsin, and with an emphasis land use and planning, so I thought maybe it might be beneficial. Cottonwood's growing and it might help in some way, you know, for me to apply.
Fantastic, no, that background has uniquely suited, so that'd be great to have you on board. We are definitely growing, so get ready, embrace yourself, yeah. Okay, all right, any questions?
I don't think you'll be bored.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you like the motion?
Sure, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2980, appointing Terrell Sherman, a member of the City's Planning and Zoning Commission. Move to approve Resolution Number 2981, reappointing Christopher Dowell, a member of the City's Planning and Zoning Commission. And I move to approve Resolution Number 2982, reappointing Robert Williams, a member of the City's Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that. So Vice Mayor made the motion, Mayor seconded it, and roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alt House?
Yes.
Councilmember Holtz?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Thank you, and if we could please read those resolutions by title only?
Resolution Number 2980, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Terrell Sherman, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing her term of office. Resolution Number 2981, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Christopher Dowell, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office. And Resolution Number 2982, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Robert Williams, a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and establishing his term of office. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Up next, under new business, we have item four, which is ordinance number 657, amending the city's zoning ordinance by amending Section 418(c)(1) Zone Light Commercial by amending Section D Property Development Standards 5, Minimum Rear Yard, and this is the first reading. Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here with three tax amendments tonight, and you are all familiar with that. They were before you, either through work session or one of them was suggested by you. So I'll start with the first one. This one is for the commercial light, (c)(1) Light Commercial zoning adjustment on the side yard setbacks and arts, culture, and entertainment district boundaries. And this is the first reading. And again, this requires, this proposal is for the zero setback in the rear, and as you know, we have existing structures already in this area, and with the current code, we apply these setback regulations that doesn't match with the existing building. So this, we had several problems with especially infill projects. So this was before you, again, you know the problem, and... So, this was before you, again, you know the problem, and we are bringing this recommendation, and actually, this will be with case by case in one area that director can make those decisions, and instead of just having a blanket statement, again, to make it the uniformity with the existing buildings.
Sure, okay, very good. I know we've gone over this in detail, but are there any questions from council for staff? No, okay. All right, any public comment on this item? It's just the first reading, so there won't be any action taken tonight, but we'll bring it back again at a regular meeting and have a vote. Okay, thank you. All right, and we'll move, oh, if we could have Deputy Clerk read Ordinance Number 657 by title only.
Ordinance Number 657, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the City's zoning ordinance by amending Section 418(c)(1) zone light commercial by amending Section D property development standards, five, minimum rear yard. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And along those same lines, we have Ordinance Number 658, amending the City's zoning ordinance by amending Section 420(c)(R) zone, commercial residential district by amending Section D property development standards, five, minimum rear yard. This is the first reading.
Again, this is very similar to the other one that we were presenting, it came from you, actually, Mayor, that suggestion, not, why not take that, extend it to the (c)(R) zone? And it made sense, it's not just Old Town, but extend it towards the (c)(R) zone, which is kind of extension of the Old Town, and eventually we'll get there. And so, again, it is case by case, depending on the situation with the existing structures, we'll make that decision, but we'll be more flexible.
Okay. Again, we've discussed it before, any other discussion, questions, anything from the public? Okay. First reading again, so there's no action, we'll take action here in a couple of weeks. If we could please have the Deputy Clerk read Ordinance Number 658 by title only.
Ordinance Number 658, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the City's zoning ordinance by amending Section 420(c)(R) zone, commercial residential district by amending Section D property development standards, five, minimum rear yard. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Item 6, under New Business, is Ordinance Number 659, amending the City's zoning ordinance by amending Section 404 general provisions by amending Section G 6A swimming pools. Again, first reading.
Okay, this is, currently, we have a setback requirement, the swimming pool should be ten feet away from the structure. And more and more with the subdivisions, we realize that it is not applicable, and yards are smaller, ten feet from the house, and also setbacks from the rear or the side setbacks. So, it is becoming impossible to put a swimming pool in this new subdivision. So, we staffed some research, and most of the places are with five feet, so we are recommending to reduce ten feet to five.
Okay. Any questions from council on this?
Makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Easy breezy. All right, again, first reading, no action tonight, we'll take action in a couple of weeks. Anything from the public on this item? No, okay, then we'll ask the Deputy Clerk to please read by title only Ordinance Number 659.
Ordinance Number 659, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the City's zoning ordinance by amending Section 404 general provisions by amending Section G 6A swimming pools. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item 7, under New Business, is follow-up recommendations to the Barriers to Riding Survey suggested by the Bicycle Advisory Committee. Mr. Hezekiah Allen, evening.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Hezekiah Allen with the Parks Recreation Department. You know the BACs here is when you see a bunch of bicycles parked outside of the council chambers, and they still rode today, which is fantastic. It is my pleasure to announce Randy Young, he is the manager of the Ridge Valley Bicycle Company, with the hard work that was done by Nancy Godchak and her team. This is a follow-up to the Barriers to Cycling Survey that was presented to council earlier this year. Council had requested that the BAC provide follow-up recommendations, and that's what we're here to do tonight, so.
Good, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Young, how are you?
Good, how are you this evening?
Very well, nice to be in here.
Thank you, thank you for having me, council, and mayor, and thank you, Hezekiah, and everybody who worked so hard for this. So, as Hezekiah said, I'm Randy Young. Well, so, and that's what we're focusing on mostly today, is using our local road systems for bicycle commuting and recreation as well, but mainly commuting. So, in 2018, the BAC conducted a barriers to riding survey and received 354 responses. The BAC presented our findings to council in August of 2018, where we were tasked with identifying specific solutions to the information presented. Very briefly, the barriers to riding, most of the people responded showed interest in commuting by bicycle or riding recreationally, but these were the primary barriers. Tonight, our largest focus will be on just three areas, but we'll briefly mention some other barriers. After the data was collected, we identified the three main areas, and we will go over them, but we have four safety suggestions, five built environment suggestions, and two regarding maintenance of the already present built environment. So, first, we're going to begin with safety. And as we can see here, over seventy-four percent of the people surveyed found that either a danger barrier or a moderate barrier was aggressive speeding or unsafe motor vehicle drivers. We're going to address this a little bit in the future, but there's some ways that we, I feel that we as a community can actually help with that. Obviously, we can't always, well, our police department does a good job of controlling speed, but we can't always control how people drive, but we can control some road environment pieces that relate to that. And then, so, we suggest priority, oops, where am I? I lost my spot. Okay, so, one of the suggested safety solutions is bicycle safety classes. We would like to implement these classes for anybody who's interested. So, this would also be if you did want to commute to work, but you didn't feel that you have the ability to do that safely. And we also would ask that possibly bicycle riders with habitual practices of not following traffic laws, riding against traffic, riding on sidewalks, these sort of things, not by general traffic laws, if it could be something that they could be required to attend a safety course, and maybe there could be even a fee for that safety course, which would, could help offset the cost of the safety course for those people who just wanted to take the course to be a safer commuter on their own. It could be possibly offered by Cottonwood Police Department, assistance with Yavapai County Community Health Services, and maybe some volunteer communities, or volunteer community members, and other cyclists. Okay, suggested safety solution number two is a little more involved, and this goes into certain, and we would like to prioritize certain intersections, so we're not suggesting that we go throughout town and paint green lines everywhere. We want to focus on certain areas that feel dangerous when you're crossing them, when you're approaching them. This not only helps cyclists understand where to be on the road, but it helps motorists understand where to expect to see cyclists. Color pavement within bicycle lane increases the visibility of the facility, identifies potential areas of conflict, and reinforces priority to cyclists in conflict areas. An area that I'll just mention briefly would be the intersection of Main Street and Tenth, which is an offset intersection, so it's already a little difficult to maneuver even for traffic and pedestrians, but as a cyclist, that one's quite confusing of where you should be, how you should be taking the lane. And obviously, there's others in town as well, and we'll touch on that here in a second, too. Okay, so, suggested safety item number three, which is continued city support for community operation bike rodeos. We want to really thank Cottonwood Police Department, Cottonwood Fire and Medical for their, their support's been amazing. This is already happening, we just wanted to emphasize how important this is. The bike rodeo was hugely successful last year, we've been invited back, and we've, lots of community members have asked about this, and I believe that these type of things, when we start, obviously, the younger you start learning how to ride safely, the easier it's going to be to do. So, that's, again, that's already in place, we just want to focus on keeping that happening, and we really do thank our partners in that. Suggested safety solution number four is a little bit more involved. It would involve lowering the speed limit on Main Street from Willard to Cactus. So, Willard is the intersection, that's just right up here, and of course, Cactus is the last intersection as you're going around Bachi leading towards Clarkville. We feel that by lowering that speed limit, and we're going to touch on the road diet here in a little bit, that's already been approved, that's the place where bike lanes will end. The bike lanes will actually come to and end at the Willard intersection. We believe by slowing traffic down, that makes it not a mistake for cyclists, but pedestrians, and hopefully better for the businesses in the Old Town area as well. That said, we understand the complexities of that, and we at least would like, and we'll touch on these signs in a minute, but we at least like a sign there when that road diet does come into place, that asks that, or reminds that current state law is cyclists can take the lane. So, what we would, we would like is one of those nice signs that they make that show the bicycle and say bicyclists may take the lane. That doesn't mean that we want cyclists to always automatically jump in the lane, but we want it to warn motor vehicles that the bike lane ended, but the cyclist still has to go somewhere. Traditionally, that's one of the most dangerous things for a cyclist, is to come to an end of the bike lane. And anyways, moving on, and now we're going to talk about built environment. Okay, so, built environment was second on our list, thirty-nine percent of people said that a lack of bike lanes and paths was a major barrier. That's already been addressed, we have the road diet that's been approved by council, and so that's going to help. And then, the second biggest area that with over fifty percent, actually over sixty percent, of people surveyed saying that was either a moderate or major barrier, was gaps in the bicycle network. We will touch on that here shortly about some solutions towards that area. So, the suggested built environment solution number one is, of course, implementing the road diet, diet improvement project that was approved by council on 3/13/2018. This is going to really help, because obviously, that's going to put a bike lane all the way through Main Street, and will easily connect to Tenth Street to Sixth, Mingus Avenue has bike lanes on it. It'll really help with that overall infrastructure to get from, of course, there's a state highway in there, but to get from Fur all the way to Main, which would cover most of the town. Our second suggestion is install bicycles may use full lane signs in two areas. This is a sign that I mentioned briefly being also put in at Willard. One is 12th Street from Aspen to Burke, and on that, from the Kids Park going north to Aspen on 12th Street, the road is quite narrow, there's usually cars parked along it, and it's also somewhat fast-moving traffic. This is a connected corridor that is not currently easily bikeable. I bike it from time to time, I really wouldn't even recommend people do bike it, but it's... One of our suggestions is possibly some no parking signs in the area where, just where the road narrows. We're not suggesting no parking on the whole street, just where it narrows there. Or a possible alternate route, which we'll touch on briefly. Bike lanes on Aspen abruptly end well before the intersection at Sixth to the west and Main to the east. The importance there is, again, that's where we would ask that council would consider possibly bicycle may use full lane signs. Because, again, that's safer for not just cyclists, but also commuter traffic, motor vehicle traffic, as they will be aware that the cyclist that is in the bike lane is suddenly going to be in the roadway. And that said, I believe most cyclists understand that when you see that sign, that doesn't mean we automatically swerve out into the middle of the road, we're just aware that... It's more of an awareness thing, because it already is, obviously, within state law, we wouldn't be asking for it if it wasn't. And suggestion for built environment solution number three is a possible alternate route from Mingus Avenue to Main Street. This would be a connection that's through open space, but is currently, to my understanding, mostly private property, so it would involve some easiness. There is a ridable path where that yellow line is already. That said, and there's no no trespassing signs or anything like that currently, though I do, I do know one hundred percent goes through some private property. So, obviously, we would have to get permission from whoever that is.
Probably after tonight, there will be signs up.
Yeah, or there would be signs if there was more than one or two of us riding it, though I've never actually seen anyone or had a problem. But, again, yeah, that would be one alternative, and one of the reasons for recommending this is, again, the intersection at Tenth and Main being really the main connector, but not a very easy intersection to navigate by car, let alone by bicycle.
That's been discussed, I think, in the past as a trail connection, it is a great connection between Main and Mingus.
Yeah, it is, it's wonderful, and again, I'm not sure, we can look into more of what that would entail, too. And then, the suggested solution number four is to update our, the Bicycle Advisory Committee's bike route maps. We're actually in the process of doing that, those will come out this year, so this is another thing that is already being implemented. We have sponsorship that's willing to pay for the maps, and they do assist community traffic. One of the main things, I think, that would be very important is getting those maps out into the community with the help of maybe some other local businesses, obviously, at the bike shop we have them, which works really well, we give a lot of them away, but I think, you know, that would be a main thing, is making people aware that there are routes that work, which moves us on to number five. After the bike routes are done, to do some update bike route signage. These are just examples that are other places, it doesn't necessarily have to be this large of a sign, because, again, these signs are for the cyclists. So, they don't need to be necessarily giant signs that motorists can see, they can be small, below existing signage, I'm assuming that's actually possible. And so, basically, the idea is just to let people know that if you continue this way, there is bike lane, or the bike lane will resume, that sort of thing, giving people routes around town that are easy and decisive to follow. Okay, so, moving on and to the maintenance side of it. Maintenance was third on the list that people considered either a major or moderate barrier. This, to me, part of this is, is, I think, some of the bike lanes that we're talking about, like the road diet will create, those lanes don't really exist yet, but there are a few areas where the bike lanes can appear poorly maintained, but sometimes it's actually just, it's not necessarily a bike lane, it's actually just road shoulder. So, with this, but we're going to touch on the ones that can be improved, not focusing on the ones that are just shoulder, that aren't bike lane. So, so let's, that, suggestion number one is a couple of areas where roadway improvement could help. Number one, the picture to the left there, you can see is Mingus Avenue and Main Street. That's, I believe that's actually part of, Mingus, I believe, is getting actually finished to Main, so I think that's going to somewhat be taken care of, and I could be misinformed about that, though. And then, Main Street entering Old Town is the one on the right. Situations like these, obviously, generally push cyclists out into traffic. And, again, I understand that the city does a great job of road maintenance, by the way, we don't want to suggest that they don't, but these are just areas where it could be improved, there's some other ones around town. One of the things we would like to focus on is making suggestions of specific areas that connect bicycle paths and lanes. And so, that's, that's basically the idea there, and maybe, again, signage, when we know that there's, like, I think that drainage guard there has to be there, so, and obviously, you can't really ride a bicycle across that depending on the type of bicycle, but that might be another place where a little bit of signage could help motorists realize cyclists are going to most likely come into the roadway. And the suggestion number two is to adjust street sweeping schedule to maintain pivotal bike lanes. We have a priority sweep schedule that we came up with as a group, that we, basically, would like to forward to... basically would like to forward to the, the city. And obviously it's a suggestion. So we know that City Works is very, very busy and they've been very actively involved in talking to us about this. We, and we appreciate that a lot, but obviously this, this makes it very difficult to commute via bicycle on the pictures that we're seeing right here. This is actually, I wanna make sure I named the right street. This is Sixth Street, yeah. So this is Sixth Street and the photos were taken on January eighteenth of this year. So we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not just presenting old photos of the worst we've ever seen. Now, there was obviously some storm and I will happily report that area is cleaned up now. So, so they're, they do a good job, but there are, this would be one of the priority areas. Obviously Main Street would always be a priority. You know, and I think most of those are areas that they would, that motorists would also appreciate having prioritized. And basically that's it from all of us and thanks. Anybody having questions or if I was unclear about anything, which I often am?
Questions for Randy? No? No, I think that you did a great job. We, we tasked you with kind of a monumental task is to, you know, narrow down on, on these suggestions and I think you did a great job. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
So, Council, is there anything that stands out to you from this presentation? I guess should I say, is there anything that seems like we shouldn't be focused on?
Did you say shouldn't?
Should, should not, something that, that doesn't stick out. Well, the point I'm getting at is this hasn't really been vetted by staff yet. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I could, it has not. We did share the presentation with the department directors, with the chief of police, with our public works director. So we're aware of them and we're gonna look at them as, as the presenter stated. The road diet, some of that stuff we're already working on and trying to be very friendly and, and we will include that. I would be happy to take that recommended schedule and I can share that with our public works director for the sweeping and we'll look at that. But we are looking at it as presented.
I think it, it also has to be part of the budget, you know, process. There were, you know, some great suggestions, but they cost money and, you know, that has to all be, you know, worked through and, and talked about because we have to decide, you know, what's most important.
Right. If we could just, one, just one second more here. Yeah, I agree. I think it's, I'd like all of them to be done right now, you know, or yesterday would be better, but.
It was, it was very thorough. I liked the fact that you took a survey and you only focused on the top issues, which instead of asking for everything, that was.
No, it was very balanced. It was very balanced, yeah. Sir, go ahead.
I don't know how this works.
If you could just introduce yourself though, that'd be great.
My name's Jeff. I also work at the bike shop. Something I just thought of that would kind of be cheap and easy that would help be less daunting for cyclists, especially first time. Like that picture, the road grate that was to screen debris from getting into the drainages. We just had a whole big improvement thing happen out in Cornville where I live, where they shored up the shoulders and they got up next to the asphalt. Anyways, wherever you have drainages that are being affected by erosion and wear, if you fill them in, you end up saving the whole roadway. So when they do tar patch and stuff for the city with a little more emphasis around those drainages, it'll actually make the road last longer and be safer for cyclists. Was just a thought I had. It is something that they do tar patch pretty frequently and it actually has a roadway saving feature to it as well when they do that.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Jeff.
I don't know how to communicate that to the people actually doing it, but.
Right. All right.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and thank you to Mace, Gotchak, and Heather for, and Randy for putting that presentation together.
Yeah, great work really. This, this committee's come a long way and I'm just really pleased you guys are working on our behalf to keep us, keep us on the right track, so to speak. Okay, anything else? Okay, then we will move on to item eight, which is the acceptance of the resignation of Kyla Allen from the Cottonwood City Council and declaring the seat open and establishing a process for filling the vacancy.
Mayor and Council, well, I'm sorry. I just wanted to apologize for writing the longest motion. But by way of explanation, I, I think the discussions prior to preparing this item for you all was to be, after we tee up the conversation and you make your decisions, to make the motion as explicit as possible so that there is the cookbook, the recipe for following to fill the vacancy that was occasioned by former Vice Mayor Allen's resignation.
It's not the longest motion in the world.
It's pretty long.
It's pretty long. Council, how would you like to move forward with this?
I, you know, I agree. I think, you know, we need to accept applications. We need to fill the position. It was a four-year term that, you know, Kyla was just elected to and, and I personally prefer the, until, you know, the next reg, next election, so like a one and a half or two-year term. My concern with that is then we have five seats up at one time and only two seats up at the, you know, off time and, and it's gonna be a little lopsided. I guess is kind of the word. Because we would have my seat, Tosca's seat, Ruben's seat, and then if this seat, you know, was then up for reelection at the next election, we would have that seat and the mayor. So we would have, you know, five, five openings. And so that, that's my only concern about just doing it to the, to the next election period.
Sure, okay.
And I just wanted to bring that out there, make, get thoughts from others.
I agree with that, that, that we need to keep those staggered as much as possible. I mean, we might not even need an election if five candidates come out for five positions. So I do agree with that point. I, I have my opinions on how I'd like to see that seat filled, but I understand that we probably should do an open call for applications. And a few steps up.
Do, do you agree, I just wanna be clear that, so with Councilor Al House, that you think this appointed position should be for the full four-year term?
Yes.
And I didn't say that, I said, honestly, I could, I could go either way on this one. I can, I can see the, the logic behind just doing a two-year and, and then having the person or having the, the people, you know, elect. But I can also see the argument that then we would have five, five seats open at one time and only two the next. I can see, I, I need to be persuaded, I guess.
Only, only if we could, if you did them to a two-year term and then we had an election, that would have to be a two-year term that would then that seat would go back to a four-year term.
And I believe that's how it would be handled, yeah.
That's exactly right.
So then I would be all in favor of doing a two-year term.
Yeah, the seat that you'd be campaigning for would, and we've done this in the past, I believe, it would be for a two-year term. That's the seat you'd campaign for.
Okay. Is, is that why Clarkdale has two-year terms and four-year terms or is that just, I should be asking you? Is that just a?
I, I don't know why they chose to do what, what they do, but moving to actually when, when a city or town is formed, there is a class of, of council members and, and they, they actually serve simultaneously. And the election to, and the decision to stagger the terms is one that's made by the council.
Okay, I was just curious.
Personally, I feel this is a decision that I like to leave to the people. And so I, I do echo the concern that we would have five vacancies and that could be, again, you know, are we even going to have to have an election due to, you know, participation in the past? But personally, I, I don't want to be making this decision. I, I think this should be up to the voters. So my preference would be to fill for the two-year term and then have an election for the remaining two years and let the people decide who they would like to represent them.
Councilmember Hall's, how do you feel?
Well, if I understand what's being said, we would fill the vacancy for two years. And then at the two-year point, when we have the next election, we would have one seat open for two years and the other four seats would be open for four years. I suppose that could work and I agree with Tosca about letting the voters decide who they want to sit on the council. It just seems convoluted to me. Because we're so close, you know, we've just started a whole new council. And it isn't like it was two years ago when we had council members resigning to run for other positions. And we had to appoint people for two years because that's what they had left on their, their terms. I've never done the two and two, so I'm, I'm open to it. Kind of a different situation. I'm not sure how the public would respond.
I like the suggestion of the, of the two and two. It makes me feel much more comfortable instead of two and then four. And, and that's how I thought it would work, would be a two and then, and then four and that just really, you know, lopsides us. We'd only be lopsided for the, for the one year, for the one election cycle.
Right. And I'd wanna, just to be clear, I'd wanna, I wanna go back and research exactly the mechanics of it, but the last time this came up, it, it was for two and then, and then we sort of caught back up. Reset the four-three cycle.
I like that.
I like that too.
Okay. And, and I would agree. I think it's important that we get it back in front of the voters as quickly as possible, but we need to fill the vacancy so we can continue our, our work up here. Is there anything else that you had to, would like to add or delete from the, the process that's suggested here?
Does this motion cover what we're speaking of here?
It does. And it's the product of discussions with the manager, the mayor, myself, the clerk's office.
Well, I'll make a motion if anybody, unless anybody else has something to say.
Just, I'm just gonna go ahead and throw just one monkey wrench in it just, cause why not? We did do a stakeholder group for the candidates for city managers. It's something you'd be interested in doing? Just sort of a ad hoc, take our top pick of folks and have them interview? Or you wanna just do a public, public interview?
I, you know, one thing, and Tosca may wanna speak to this as well. I participated in the last public interview. And the one thing, from, from somebody who was sitting out there, you know, trying to get up here on council, the, the public interview, although I think it's good, everybody should be able to see it, it also wasn't really fair to the person who drew the first, you know, card. Didn't get to hear all the questions and the people towards the end, and I think there were eleven or twelve of us and I believe I was like seven. We gotta hear everybody else's answers and we gotta take, you know, what, what we really liked and, and oh, I'll take that and I'll take that. I personally tried not to and, and I, I tried to come up with new stuff, which maybe that hurt me because I didn't say those, those certain things that, that were being looked for because I wanted to be unique. And so I do like, I, I would like for us to talk about the possibility of some of this being done in executive session because it's, it's not really fair. And it's a hard thing to do. I mean, when you interview people, we didn't interview all four city managers in front of each other. You know, okay, you get this question, you know, it's, it's a private, it's a, it's a private thing when you, when you interview somebody. Although on the flip side, I can see the public has the right to, to, to see it. And so maybe a couple of questions, but not all of them. I don't, I'm not exactly sure how we would work that. But that was one concern I had with the way it was done last time and Tosca was a part of it too. She may.
That seems reasonable.
Or how would you feel about maybe posting the questions? I mean, giving them a little bit of prep time? I'm, I'm open either way. I do agree. There seemed to be a bit of a disadvantage if you were at the front or if you were at the end because at the end, everything had been said. If you're at the beginning, you know, the very first person, even number two, you're kind of scrambling to collect your thoughts. So I, I really could go either way. I do think it is valuable that the public at least sees some of that interview process, get to know, you know, who these candidates are because they aren't getting to cast their vote for them. But, you know, if there are any other ideas about how to assuage those, those challenges, I'd be open to discussing those.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? That's actually not an uncommon HR practice where you give everybody. The way I've done it before is I give them the questions when they arrive at the interview. And that way, but they're timed interviews, so each person gets, however early they are, they get that much time to study and think about the questions so that the first person isn't on the spot as much and they all have a little bit of time to collect their thoughts. And you often get a better response as, as Councilmember Al House talked about, if you've had time to formulate an answer. So we could do that if the council so desires, get the questions out after you've narrowed it down to the people you'd like to interview. That does help a little bit.
Okay, and I think we can come up with those, that list of questions as we narrow down the pool. Okay.
Right, I'd also, another thing I was gonna say is I would like to, you know, relook at the questions. I felt there were too many last time. And I, I would like to relook at that.
Okay. Okay. I think we're basically in agreement with the motion that's presented.
Didn't you get a yellow slip?
I did, yeah. It's, yeah. I'll deal with it. It's not related.
Oh, okay.
So.
I thought maybe it was related.
No, I, okay, then any comments from the public on this item? How about a motion from Council?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Corbin made a good point. It, it's gonna be hard for, for staff to get direction from the council regarding the questions unless we're gonna, we're gonna delay this by another meeting cycle, cause we kinda have a calendar in mind. And, and if the council wants to weigh in and make a decision about what the questions are gonna be, unless you just wanna give management direction to provide fewer questions, but if you're gonna.
I, I would defer to our experienced HR city manager there to come up with some really good ones.
Mayor, if I could, I can talk to individual council members and get one question or two questions that they feel very strongly about. And then you and I can narrow that down to a manageable number if that's okay with council that way. And I'll work with my HR hat and maybe our HR professional to make sure it's right. I work with Amanda to come up with some options for us to discuss.
That seemed reasonable.
I love it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine.
Great, thank you. All right, then longest motion in the world. Who's brave enough to make it?
Should I take a breath?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to, since you threw a monkey wrench in, an idea was just given to me. I get no credit. We could always interview those sessions and air them later for the public if there was still a concern about doing interviews in public. Don't know, haven't talked to the lawyer about that, but that is a thought that someone just threw out. If we're concerned about the, the public forum.
My concern was more the fairness to all of the people applying. And, and I'm perfectly fine if, if, you know, we have our pool of applicants and hopefully, you know, it's a good number of people. I'm, hopefully not twelve again, but that would be a long night, but, but you know, as long as they all have the questions ahead of time, so once, you know, you, a couple of days before or something, they're, they're given the, the questions that are gonna be asked, then I think it's fair to everybody and, and, you know, we go in the order, we, we go in, you know, they draw numbers and.
And I don't, I believe the, the way this is written, the way we discussed, is that we wouldn't be bringing twelve in for interview more than likely unless there's just twelve stellar candidates that we, we don't, I mean, they're all gonna be stellar candidates, that's not what I mean. I just mean we're gonna, this council's gonna come to consensus on, on a handful.
Great.
Folks to.
Four or five.
Yeah, okay.
So if we have twelve applicants to begin with, then we will sort through that the same as we did for the city manager position.
Correct.
And then narrow it down to the top candidates.
Correct.
I like that.
That's, that's a good process.
Okay. Awesome.
All ready? I move to accept Kyla Allen's resignation from her seat on the Cottonwood City Council effective January thirty-first, twenty nineteen to direct staff to advertise the vacancy and solicit applications, letters of interest and a resume for a period of no less than two weeks and to establish a two-step process under which council will hold a special meeting to select applicants to be interviewed, part of which selection process may be conducted in executive session, subject to the right of each applicant to require any discussion of their application to take place in open session. Hold a second meeting to publicly interview the candidates and select a candidate for appointment to the vacant seat until the next regularly scheduled council election at that. at that same or subsequent meeting. Following a discussion of the candidates by the council, part of which discussion may be conducted in the executive session, subject to the right of each candidate to require any discussion of their candidacy to take place in open session. Second.
You owe me. Well stated. Um, we had Councilmember Matthews make the motion and Councilmember Hall second it. And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Al House?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Linsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
Very good, thank you. Before we go on to claims and adjustments, I goofed up, didn't ask for public comment during the bicycle, um, presentation and we have a gentleman who would like to speak to the council, Mr. Greg Miranda. Sorry about that. I, you got to throw something at me sometimes.
Yeah, I just, uh, hello, uh, my name's Greg Miranda. Moved here about seven months ago. I'm here basically just to get active, just start participating. I had no idea that was on the agenda, but I've been a cyclist, a competitive cyclist for 30 years now, over 30 years, and I loved their presentation. I think it's great. I think bicycles have helped me stay out of jail, maybe the grave, I don't know. And what I've been doing a lot with my stepkids is I've been riding to the skateboard. I don't trust them riding, relive over off of, uh, rocking chair, coming across that bridge, going down Mingus. I have to ride with them and I like what was proposed because then we can see where they, I could let them go on their own someday. And so that's all I really want to say. I was really impressed with Randy's presentation.
Okay, we'll, we'll pass it along to them. I'm sorry I passed you up.
No, no, it's all right.
Thanks for sticking around.
Thank you.
Okay, then I would move to pay the claims.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes and they move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Uh, Councilmember Hall's made the motion, Councilmember Al House seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.